City Council, please form to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Kamara? Dionne? Kilby?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Raposo?
Yep.
And President La Libbidi-Labo.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. It's a public hearing. Do you have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion to open the meeting made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For Comcast Cable Corporation for new pole location as follows: on Hancock Street, three new pole locations. The petitioners propose an extension from the existing utility pole number 615/3 located on Hancock Street. Three new wind poles will be placed along Hancock Street to extend their aerial hardline plant approximately 350 feet to service two new single-family residences and a future house lot. Are there any proponents wishing to speak? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Any opponents? Madam Clerk, is there anything written?
We have a letter in support of the petition.
Is it the one you emailed earlier?
Yes.
Do you want to read it?
If you would like me to.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to say something.
Counselor in seat six.
Thank you. They're coming in for three new poles, and I don't know if we should give them three new poles. Do we have a contract with them? Is he here?
The city administration rule.
I just asked him. I'm not sure. I don't think so. We don't have yet.
Do you have a motion to waive the rules?
So made.
Motion made by Counselor Raposo, seconded by Counselor Prera. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sir, could you just give your name and address for the record?
Yes. Fred Cabral, outside plant project coordinator, 440 Miles Standish Boulevard, Tottenham, Massachusetts.
Okay, you know, it's been over a year that we're supposed to have a contract, and nobody seems to be doing anything. The people have been complaining about the rates and everything else, and I'm waiting to have a move in Fall River, but I can't see giving you permission to put it up. We don't know if you're going to be here. More than likely, you'll be here, but you've got no contract with the city of Fall River. So I just don't think we should allow this until the things are squared away.
Counselor, I don't know what that's got to do with providing service to two residents that have got new homes down at Hancock Street.
All right, well, it's just something I think's got to be cleared up. You know, I'm sure the mayor knows about it. It's just nothing's being done. But people ask me every once in a while, what's going on with cable TV, and they work any solution out that they could maybe lower the rates or something, but nobody's talking to anybody. So that's what it is. So the people out there, they don't know what's happening, and then we get this, you want three new poles, all well and good, but let's get things squared away so we know where we stand. And that's nothing against you, my friend. It's just an item. I just brought it up, and maybe somebody will shake their tail to see what's going on. Maybe they can get the city a better break, you know?
Well, I certainly am trying to shake my tail down there to get service to a couple of residents down in Hancock Street.
Yeah, no problem, because it's nothing to do with you. Okay, so, you know, it's up to my colleagues. They want to vote for it, that's later, whatever. They don't want to vote, that's all right, and then let the company do what they have to do. With that, I yield, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further from the council?
No.
Seeing nothing?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the hearing made by Counselor Prera, seconded by Counselor Raposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion adjourned made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
City Council Committee on Finance now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Dionne?
Kilby? Here.
Lee?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Raposo?
Yep.
And President La Libbidi-Labo?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item is citizens' input. One person signed up to speak, Nelson Vasquez, 210 Sunset Hill, and the subject is diamond. Three minutes.
Hello, everyone. Today, I'm not, I want to make it clear, I'm not here to advocate for or against the diamond project. I am mainly here advocating for the taxpayers of Fall River. The state constitution says very clearly that all elected officials are answerable to the people at all times and accountable. And the vote that this council took just recently, the previous meeting, violated that constitution. And anything in excess of $5 million has to go in front of the people. But here's the reality of the situation for this city. We have structural deficits that are going to be knocking on the door very soon, foretold by the former CFO just last year. Water and sewer rates are going to be going up. We have the cost of living going up. We have the South Coast rail that's going to drastically increase the cost of living in our city, as we know. Property owners and renters are already feeling the pinch. All of this, and including the DIRFEE tax payment that's going to be coming due really soon. It's just not feasible for the city to undertake this debt payment. It's not financially feasible. The money is not there, and it won't be there. Because if we continue down this path, we are going to see more and more tough decisions that are going to have to be made to a future city council and a future administration, which is irresponsible for a city council to undertake and just to hand off. We owe it to the next future leaders of this city, future mayor, future city council, to build upon where they want to bring Fall River, not be bogged down by today's problems. And to end my segment, I want to close with a quote and with a brief follow-up. "Truth never damages a cause that is just." That was foretold by Gandhi. My position is, you let the people speak on this issue, because we're talking about a situation where a project of this magnitude that will have severe financial implications on its people, if it's passed in this fashion, the result is not going to be favorable for this city. And then, and only then, if the people speak, we will know the real truth of the people. This is a very serious situation. I understand we all want education, but we have to do it right. We have to live within our means.
Fifteen seconds.
And that's what we need to do, because that is responsible government at its best. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anything written?
Yes, Madam President. Council President and members of the city council, I wish to address two issues that I believe are extremely important. First, I want to address my support of the city council's decision to not present a debt exclusion to the voters of Fall River. I, like Counselor Kadeem, do not believe that the people of Fall River understand exactly what a debt exclusion is. When the average voter hears that it is a new school for the children, they act with their hearts instead of their heads, and then afterwards regret the decision not understanding its ramifications. A debt exclusion is nothing more than a time-limited proposition, two and a half override. It basically means more taxes on an already burdened taxpayer. I ask that the city council override the mayor's veto and find a way to meet the needs of the diamond project within the budget. Whereas several elected officials want this matter sent to the voters, all that has to happen is for the city council to refuse the diamond project, and it will be sent to the entire district for consideration. This does not by any means show a declination for the diamond project or that you are against diamond. It demonstrates that you, as a body, want to hear the position of the citizens, which is what you are required to do per our Massachusetts Constitution. Declining the diamond project will not create an end run around on debt exclusion. It will ask the entire district to weigh in on the diamond project, which is what I believe the district needs to do. I would like the city council to recall when City Council Pereira fought diligently for a residency requirement, be required for employment in the city of Fall River. Mayor Paul Coogan has stated that he will follow the charter, city ordinances, and state law, and has demonstrated this in two positions. The first was when he slammed the budget through without city council approval or input, and when he vetoed the city council vote on the diamond project and debt exclusion. You have before you tonight a person who is being proposed as the Director of Financial Services, who is from Warwick, Rhode Island. Does Ms. Almond plan on establishing city residency for her employment? Will we hear that we cannot find anyone for the position because of money? Any person hired for a position in the city of Fall River who refuses to establish a residency should be denied the position. This confirms that the city of Fall River is not a place to reside in, and creates the appearance that Fall River is crime-ridden and unsightly, and this council will confirm that stereotype when it approves people in positions that they will not establish a residency for. Fall River deserves better. City ordinance requires city residency, and it is time that the Fall River City Council enforce that residency requirement. And if a position cannot be filled because of that residency requirement, I say, keep looking. We have existed for some time without several positions. It isn't fair that these employees take city tax dollars and do not spend or contribute to the betterment of Fall River. The city can do better. Respectfully, C.J. Ferry.
Anything further?
That's all we have.
Thank you. Item two, the committee on finance convened with the administration to discuss improvements and repairs at city parks and baseball fields. This was in front of the council on April 6, 21, and May 11, 21. If members of the administration would like to come to the table, please. Mrs. Smith?
Is there a motion to lift from the table?
Motion.
Motion to lift from the table made by Counselor Prera, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can we take items two and three together, because they're similar?
A motion to lift item three from the table?
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion to lift item three from the table made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Raposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to take two and three together?
Motion to take items two and three together made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item two was put in by former counselors Peckham and President Ponti. Whereas prior to the 9C cuts of 2008, the then administration mandated that the Fall River Little League, Fall River Youth League, and local Babe Ruth baseball leagues take over the financial responsibility of paying for and maintaining the lights at the baseball fields. And whereas our children, parents, coaches, and volunteers work tremendously hard to give our children the best experience possible during the baseball season, and whereas it has always been challenging for these baseball leagues to raise enough funds in order to maintain the lighting, as well as their normal expenses, now therefore, be it resolved that the committee on finance convene as soon as possible to discuss this matter, and the administration be prepared to present what the cost will be to the city in order to take this burden away from the local nonprofit baseball leagues starting this year. And the second item we're taking together came from the committee on finance. Whereas city parks are in need of repair, whereas baseball leagues are all independent and do fundraising on their own, now therefore, be it resolved that the administration prepare a presentation to address the needs of city parks and the needs of leagues, and be it further resolved that the administration and park board be invited to a future meeting of the committee on finance to present a plan to improve our city parks and baseball fields, as well as bring forward, in conjunction with the baseball leagues, any immediate capital needs for our city parks, and be it further resolved that bids to be obtained and a cost provided to the city council for a strategic master plan for all parks, and that it be researched whether open space and recreational grant funding is available for these improvements.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. Counselors, it is very nice to be before you this evening. I'm here with Nancy Smith from our Parks Department. I will say, with regard to the first of the proposals, since it was first made, it, from my understanding, is essentially a moot point at this point. The nonprofit youth leagues do not pay a fee to finance the cost of lighting. There are really two adult leagues that do pay. Those adult leagues are at Father Kelly, and then the Chu and Lafayette leagues are essentially the same league, and they pay. Aside from that, none of the youth leagues here in the city, from my understanding, pay to use the lights. And as far as I understand, and actually, this is a little bit surprising, even the AAU leagues, where there's a significant fee to be part of those leagues, do not pay. So there is no youth leagues that are being asked to bear the burden of the cost. Now, as you can see from the resolution, back in 2008, 2009, the 9C cuts are the thing that triggered this whole issue, where there was a proposal to ask these youth leagues to shoulder the burden of paying for the lights on fields. And at that time, one of the things that was done in order for the leagues to be able to do that was they were allowed to fundraise and put banners out in the fields, and from my understanding, some of those leagues even made significantly more from the banner sales than it would have cost to fund the lights. Now, the lights themselves are no longer a cost to the leagues, but they're actually still allowed to do the fundraising with the banners, and still allowed to help support themselves through that. So with that, I would defer to Director Smith, and, of course, if there's any questions about what I have to say.
Counselor Seade, Counselor Raposo?
So, I just want to, and Nancy, I think this is to you, because I've been involved with little leagues in the city for a long time, you know. Is it not accurate that the little leagues are paying the light bills when they use them?
No longer.
As of when?
As of last May, when we came before this council. Immediately following that meeting, the meters that were in the youth leagues were brought back to the city of Fall River. So since that time, since we've had that council, over a year, pretty much heading into a year, we've paid the lighting for all youth leagues. Prior to that, they did, as the city administrator said, due to the 9C cuts. That's when they were given a choice. If they wanted to utilize the lighting, then it would have to be put into their name.
Okay. And so when a league, not mentioning these leagues that are listed here, but another organization that comes in, for example, at Father Travasso's Park, the football league there came in, was using the field and the lights. They were being charged for that?
Well, we've also, they should, they will be sent a bill prior to this year using it again, because they are an adult league. If they were a youth league, and here's where the situation comes in and gets a little cloudy, because of the age of our lighting, we're not able to utilize new technology, some of the new lighting that is installed. You can use apps on your phone to control it, to turn it on, to turn it off. We don't have that. So the Board of Park Commissioners now is in the process of trying to establish, basically, a per-night fee for adults, or something to that sort, but it's, normally, it's youth leagues that use them, and if it's a youth league, we don't charge. Right now, the city has that, Travasso's Park, in their name.
Okay.
As well as Brooklyn.
As well as Brooklyn. Okay. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Seade, Counselor Lee?
How much were the costs for, so you've been paying since May 2021, so how much is that?
Well, with this fiscal year, pretty much, we're a little bit over $6,000, like between $6,000 and $7,000, but they will start utilizing the lighting now, because it does get dock earlier. So with them having tryouts and such, it's dock at 7:00. So oftentimes, they're there after that. So we will, we had proposed to the council originally above $7,000. So it may be a little bit more than that, that we'll find within our budget for this year, and have to make the adjustments when we present next year's budget.
I appreciate the information you provided about the age of the lighting, or the age of the lights themselves are not allowed to be upgraded or updated. And if I'm thinking correctly, if you had that ability, it could become more energy efficient, correct?
Right. Presently, through CPA grant, the Maplewood Senior Division, Babe Ruth, we have been granted a $499,000, and we are going to be replacing that lighting at that field. It's probably the most used, one of the most used fields, so.
Is there a timeline as to how this could all?
It's in the architect's hands right now, so we're hoping to have that, the bid documents and all that ready by sometime April or May, go out for bid. But if it's going to interrupt their season, we'll wait till the fall before we do the install.
And what was the park again, one more time?
Maplewood.
Maplewood, thank you very much. All right, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, did you want to continue, or are you off? Is everything on that one?
No, I'm good.
Counselor Seade, Counselor Kamara?
Thank you. Nancy, AAU, they, is it a local AAU league, or is it out of town?
There are two AAUs that utilize it. One is kind of a spinoff of the Dumont League, and another one, the gentleman who runs the league is from Fall River, but the participants of his league are all, it's one team, they're all out-of-town kids.
Who runs the league?
Claudio Raposo.
What age group is the AAU?
14.
14-year-old?
Both of those are 14s.
Because they charge significantly more than regular leagues would charge?
Yes.
The local kids to play.
Yes. Travel ball is always, believe me, I know, travel ball is also a lot more, always a lot more than regular league. Youth leagues, little leagues, they're usually maybe between, depending on age, between 60 to 120, a child for the season, like with the older kids paying the higher fee. But AAU is, can be anywhere from 600 to 3,000, depending on if they travel, where they go. So there is a significant difference. My understanding is, when they spoke of DIRFEE getting lighting, it was so that the AAU people could rent at that facility.
All right, with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Pelletier?
Yeah. Is the, the budgets are not ready yet, but is the mayor willing to put more money in the parks? Is he going to put more money in the parks?
So I have a presentation just to hand out that I prepared to answer that question, Counselor, with regard to what the projects right now are in the parks, and there's a lot of really great plans. Would it be okay if I pass that out?
Yes, please.
I have extras for the public as well. If you could pass them back to Madam President. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Counselor President, if I may, ask Nancy a question?
Yes, you have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you. Nancy, what, what would it take the administration to try to straighten out the problems that you have with the parks?
I don't.
That's a big question.
That's a big question.
I'm a little.
How much time?
I mean, it's like, everybody needs money. Every department needs money.
We all need money, but I think we're, we are, as, you know, we are, we have more projects ongoing now than we have ever had in the past number of years. And, I mean, there are projects that are big-ticket items, most of them, you know, $500,000, between a complete renovation of Kathy Assad, you know, the installation of lights at Maplewood. All of those are in the $500,000 range. I mean, you can only do it one step at a time, and we also have the, you know, the Lower Kennedy pickleball slash tennis courts that we're doing, Kennedy Park Senior Division Field, we're doing backstops and dugouts. So, I mean, we have a lot going on right now, as we, as we said. North Park, we've looked into the skating pond to repair that. I mean, there's a lot going on.
Who's going to determine what goes first?
These are all ongoing.
Yeah, but, how long?
Well.
You say ongoing, you're going to be done in a year?
Kathy Assad should be done by the end of June. That grant expires, we have to complete that by the end, by this June. The pickleball courts are in planning right now, the planning stage in the, in the.
Is that a grant, too?
Planning and design, that's a grant. And we cannot stop construction on that until July of 2022, so it has completion date of July of 2023. The Maplewood lights, as I said, the plans and specs are being put together, and that's as well with the Kennedy Park backstop and dugout. So all of these are ongoing and should be completed within the next year or two.
So all of them, all grants?
Kennedy Park is not a grant. The, that was money that was put in the budget by this council. It was for a project.
How much was that, you know?
$100,000.
$100,000 to do?
Backstop and dugout fencing.
Yeah.
And they'll redo the players' benches, and it's similar to what we did at Chu Park.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Seade, Counselor Raposo?
Yeah, my other, my other question was just, in terms of the permitting fee, is that fee factored in anything to do with the lighting costs or anything like that?
We have no permitting fee.
You have no permitting fee, okay.
We have, we collect zero.
Got you.
But I have to say that many of the leagues do have to participate. They, some of them do buy materials. We buy materials every year for them, clay, stone dust, we do that. But many of them do purchase these things on their own as well, and they do, do maintenance on their fields because of the manpower situation. So if they're going to get a field ready every single night, they're the ones that do it. So, I mean, we do have a lot of leagues that participate in kind of a team effort.
So, to the third, to the third item there about the needs of repair, are the baseball leagues still responsible, for example, like third base breaks? Are they still responsible to fix it at this point?
Normally, they, the bases?
Yeah.
They would. We supply home plates and pitches mounds, because each league wants a different type of bases.
Yeah.
So normally, the league themselves, they take their bases, they put them, they take them out. They're the only ones that use their bases. Home plates and pitches mounds are permanent, so we provide that.
I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Seade, Seth, Counselor Pereira?
Seth, I know you gave us this list, but I think it would be important to read this so that the public knows how much money has been invested within the city with the parks, if you wouldn't mind.
Certainly.
So that people at home can see some of the work that has been done.
I appreciate that, Counselor. Thank you for the opportunity to do that, because there is a lot of exciting work. And I'll say that the majority of this is, you know, certainly the mayor's priorities in improving the park. Our local legislative delegation has done a lot of work to try to facilitate this community development, and of course, using ARPA funds, so it's a combination of efforts. And I know Carol Fiola was instrumental with regard to, I believe, the Kathy Assad grant, and we really appreciate that. So we do have a $26,000-plus community development funding at Columbus Park for the installation of new park benches at the Ameris Playground. There's about $280,000 being spent for the basketball court and blacktop games, as well as fencing, and just safety measures around there, trimming, removal around the area, as well as park benches and signage. At Chu Park, $121,000 to replace the backstop and dugouts, as well as the bleachers. $291,000 at Etna Street, which is the Paul Pulos Park, to replace the basketball court, new blacktop games, fencing, very similar to what's being done at the Ameris Playground. The Fall River Family Picnic Grove, also known as Dave's Beach, there's almost $16,000 in community development funds there for picnic tables and signage. Bowenville Green, $20,000 for landscaping and park benches. Kennedy Park has a $400,000 park grant, as well as the $265,000 community development funds for tennis courts, pickleball courts. funds for tennis courts, pickleball courts, recently saw the design of those, that's going to be awesome. There's parking as part of that, splash pads, an upgrade to the skating rink as well as walkways and lighting and pavilion painting. The Kathy Assad Tot Lot, there's $342,000 in the park grant as well as $192,000 of community development funding for playground, basketball court, splash pad, new fencing, new walkways as well as landscaping. And then in Abbott Court, North Park, Lafayette Park, and I believe, I thought there was one more, we're replacing the skateboard parks there. The mayor actually did a walking tour of skateboard parks with a number, had invited whatever interested parties, folks that use those parks and want to have some input into what's put there. It was very well attended as he went from park to park, he gathered more people, sort of like the Pied Piper of skateboard parks, it was more and more skaters with an interest in that, got a lot of contact information for people that want to give input and they're the subject matter experts, which is fantastic. Jerry Lawton Green is a refurbishment of the green. The Cook-ashon River Trail Phase Four is just the construction of Phase Four of that trail. Within days, from what I understand, we're going to be starting the 20-mile walking trail at the reservation funded by the Mass Trail Grant and then a new backstop at Maplewood Park and some field renovations at Dumont. So of those, there's only three parks in the city that aren't getting some additional work and I would suggest that part of that is because there just isn't additional manpower and resources to do the work, there's so many resources being put to all the other parks. And I appreciate the opportunity to read that out loud for the public. There's also copies of this, it could be available to anybody who wants to contact me, I'm saken@fallriverma.org and there's also copies behind me with the clerks.
Thank you. I think that there has been a lot and continues to be more. I just want to say that with the picnic grove, I was highly involved in that and it was 15,896 versus everything else at over 100,000, 300,000, 400,000. So that says a lot about the volunteerism that came in to helping even getting mulch for free from places, getting people to donate, getting people to spread mulch, put picnic tables together, et cetera. And, you know, our city workers were great with putting in the cement pads, so when people work together, things can be done at a lesser cost. So I certainly would reach out and thank, veterans were there every day helping out. To thank everybody that helped there, that, you know, this proves how much money we saved the city in doing an area and it was much appreciated. But I think they're doing a great job. I'm looking forward to the ice skating rink. That's what I'm looking forward to. Nancy's going to look out her window and see people ice skating.
I hope.
But thank you, that's the only questions I have. I yield, thank you.
Thank you and thank you for this document. Again, I think these are the kind of things we were in the past asking for, you know, ahead of time and so we appreciate all this information, especially the financial part of it. When you gather the information, and you actually provided some of it regarding skate parks, but when you gather information to see, because this is, it's a really extensive list of what's being repaired and what's being renewed and what's being put in place in general, but when you do that, do you have, I know you must have a team of people that go out there and look at the parks, but do you also, how much information do you take from the citizens in the evaluation of what parks need? Just curious about that. You did give some insight as far as the parks, skate parks go, so.
So I can only speak to what I know recently because I've only been in this position for a short time. If Director Smith has any feedback on that, I think that would be helpful because you certainly have a little more institutional memory than I do.
I think most of it comes from, CDA has outreach meetings and they do send out various correspondents because prior to recently, most of our funding did come through CDA.
Right.
So I believe that's where they gather most of the information, at those hearings or at those meetings and through the administration going into the various neighborhood meetings. I think that's where they.
And because we've had challenges because of the pandemic, you know, those meetings haven't been as, you know, frequent, so that's why I was asking this question because I think we're starting to slowly get back to, you know, a more normal pace of having these meetings again and I'm wondering if these vessels are used for this information gathering process as well because we want to, we want to put this information out there, but we also want to make sure that people know that it's out there for them to use, you know what I mean? And when they make, if we have complaints or if we have ideas from people in the neighborhoods, we definitely want to see if we can accommodate some of those things. The last thing, mistaken, ARPA funding, is ARPA funding only being, is for the skate parks? Is ARPA the only funding mechanism right now for the skate parks? Because it says unknown or it says to be determined right now, so.
So I think part of the reason we put to be determined is, obviously, there's a process for awarding ARPA funding. We want to make sure that everyone who's part of that process has a vote in making that decision. I understand that ARPA funding is the goal here, but I can't speak for certain as to what the end result is going to be.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Anything further from the counsel? Counselor C one, Counselor C two?
Thank you, Madam President. Just in terms of the, I guess, the second resolution that was filed, so there's mention in the resolution and I recall the resolution being put forth by the entire Finance Committee with regard to a master plan for the parks, so just curious as to where we stand with the, you know, the open space and recreational plan for that. Have we looked at any grants to utilize that? Have we looked at any additional costs to have a consultant come in and actually start working with the city to really kind of identify where our conservation and recreational needs are and our resources and how we protect that and improve on those as opposed to, and I appreciate everything that's being done here, but I think part of the reasoning for the ordinance was really trying to compile a plan so that, you know, as administrations change, at least we have a master plan and as the councils change, that we can kind of follow and say, okay, this is the priority, getting input from the community in terms of what they want to see for a lot of our open space and recreational fields that we have out there. So just curious as to where we stand with that. And then the second piece to that question would be, we were looking for a joint meeting with the park board if we, if there was any discussion with the park board about coming back before the city council, just so that we can have a joint meeting to talk about, you know, the planning of a master plan or a discussion around the master plan.
So I will say that, as you probably, many of you probably know, there was a proposed plan in 2015, which I don't believe was ever adopted. So there was significant work on that.
Was that a master plan or was that an open space and recreational plan?
I believe it was an open space and recreational plan.
I have it here, the draft, it's a capital improvements plan. And in this book, there lists each park and someone had gone around, like the Blump Bennett, they went around, they determined what needed to be done. They prioritized these projects with a number of one through five. We have been in this particular book as well, pulling out different projects that needed to be done, one being the lower wall there at Kennedy Park that was collapsed on Bradford Avenue, a few of those things. So this is what I believe they have been working from. I cannot say that they have moved forward with anything new since this was from 2015. So to the best of my knowledge, I have not been involved with any forward movement on a new plan.
Right. So I would just say that that's, and I appreciate it and I'd like to actually take a look at that, I think that's something we were talking about in terms of the capital improvement plans that we were looking for, but more in line with the open space and recreational plan, the biggest component of that is public hearings and getting feedback from the public in terms of, you know, what they're envisioning with the use of our parks and recreation. So there's, you know, we can't really necessarily do it in-house by ourselves, we definitely have to get somebody, consult somebody to come in and help us assist with that and driving some, you know, workshops and, you know, getting the stakeholders at the table to say, what do we want to see? And then, and I'm sure that would be updated and that would also be included in the actual, what I'm calling the master plan so that, you know, we know what type of direction from a policy standpoint. Every time we come down, you know, Counselor in seat six asks, you know, what does the budget look like, right? So when we're coming down, you know, when we're looking at the budget, we can refer to the master plan and say, okay, this is what we've committed to doing or this is what, you know, the city would like to see done, you know, and when I say the city, you know, the people, the residents of the city in terms of, you know, walking trails or improved parks or do they want to see soccer fields, do they want to see, you know, pickleball courts is a big thing now, but what is it that folks truly want to see and what's a priority based on their, you know, their lifestyle currently with their families, right? Because I think as we discussed about this, it's about quality of life and wanting to live and work in the city of Fall River and I think that's a big component is the recreational and open space of everything. So if we can get a plan, it just makes your job easier, our job easier, especially you when you're trying to advocate for additional funding for, you know, resources on all these different parks that we're going to, that you can actually turn to a plan that has a lot of input from the community saying, this is what we want to see.
I think the city's open space plan is good until 2024 and it does have a section, of course, on parks and recreation, but it is not specific to.
Comprehensive, right.
And I think that's what you're looking for.
Right.
I would say that the, that both of those plans, the open space plan and this sort of master capital plan, neither one, at this point, has been adjusted for the work that's been able to be done through either community development or ARPA. So really, at this point, the next step would be updating what we have based upon what we're doing. But then in terms of bringing on a consultant, I think it almost goes back to the conversation that we're having almost too frequently, which is what are the city's priorities? Not to say that parks are not, parks very clearly are a priority of the city because it just creates opportunities for youth, for families, for literally everybody, every resident in our city has some opportunity to be outside, to play sports, to just be in nature created by a park. That said, as you have seen with some of the ARPA commitments that have already been made, there are other priorities that right now are pressing the city and those include roadways and drainage issues and some of the other infrastructure pieces that are there. So not to say that it's not something we're going to do, but I can't at this point commit that it's something that's going to happen in the next 90 days. It is something that the city is going to undertake, it's something that once I realized that this was on this agenda for this meeting and I also realized that there's these plans out there that really haven't been brought up to date or kept up to date and we've been pulling from them as well as we can and responding as well as we can. The conversation I've had with the mayor is that we need to really be intentional about what our plan is going for, so I think you'll see more of that.
And I can appreciate that, but what I would say and maybe partly city council fault, is at fault for this too, but this is something that was put in place and tabled back on 51121, right? So in it, it specifically says that bids be obtained and costs provided to the city council for a strategic master plan for all parks and that is research whether open space and recreational grant funding is available for these improvements. So what I would say is, and I appreciate where the mayor's coming from, but if there is a partnership, you've got to respect the fact that the city council back in 2021 had requested that we go out to bid for a consultant to come out and lay out a master plan for us, you know. Now whether or not that's his priority, that's fine, then I think we need to, as a city council, need to talk about it, but we have two items on the agenda, one of them is to, and in this is to have a joint meeting. We still haven't had a joint meeting with the park board, right? So again, that could be on the city council, not laying blame on, you know, the administration or the city council, it's just that when we put these resolutions together, we need to stop submitting feel-good resolutions, things that sound good in the moment, right? And quite frankly, I don't, this was very, very specific to really kind of get to a resolution that was very targeted, right? So let's bring in a consultant, let's get the park board here and let's start having a conversation so we can kind of move in that direction. And I think, because what we see a lot of times is a lot of piecemeal, right? So we're just really trying to get a plan in place. And I appreciate all the money and funding that's been, you know, put aside and I would say that it's probably more than I've seen in a long time and we're all excited about that, but I think we need to have a plan and make a determination as to what truly is a priority, right? The administration, you know, priorities change with administration, so Americans submit a priority, you know, one or two years and if there's a change in the council, the priorities could change and at the end of the day, it's the city council's responsibility to appropriate funding. So if we're not on the same page in terms of where the priority is, then don't be upset when the appropriations don't occur. You know, so I think it's just, these types of planning helps everybody and gets everybody to the table so that we have the park board here. You know, we've never really had a conversation with the park board, we always hear about the park board, but the city council has never, you know, requested a joint meeting to truly discuss all the issues that we have with our parks and recreation. So let's invite that group that's in charge of the park board, let's hear what they have to say. And I know we can participate and attend their meetings as well, but I think a joint meeting would allow us to do that, but I think we need to, you know, kind of fulfill, unless, and I'm just one council, you know, my other colleagues could disagree with me, but we've got a resolution to meet with the park board and to kick off a master plan for parks and open space, so I'd like to see that through you, Ms. Madam President, to make sure that we get the park board here.
So I'll give you an update on these two resolutions. Originally, we had another item in finance and the attendees couldn't be here, so we switched it on Thursday to these two resolutions. I did speak with the mayor and explained what the resolutions were and what we were requesting. However, with Attorney Aiken not being here last year, I asked that just these two come to the table, give us an update on where we're at, put together a presentation, which he did and on very short notice and I appreciate that, and let us know where we're at as of now and quite honestly, shame on us or the councilors that were here last year that didn't bring this up again over the last, since May.
Right, and again, I'm not, I'm really not trying to lay blame on the administration or the city council, I just want to make sure that we address it. And I think, obviously, it's going to cost this money to put together and hire a consultant to come in and assist us with the master plan, but we need to know what that is, how much is that going to cost? And I think at some point, you know, the city council needs to make a determination if we want to appropriate funding for it, go out for an RFP, things of that nature, but the resolution was filed, it's one that's being discussed, so that's, I still stand by the intent of this resolution. With that, I yield.
Anything further from the counsel? Attorney, I do want to just say one thing because I did say it to the mayor and I'm not sure that it went through. Tony Hawk does have a skateboard, skate park grant, so if you could look into that for the skate parks.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam President.
There's a website for it online to apply.
Can you repeat that? None of us heard you.
Tony Hawk, the skateboarder, has a skateboard, skate park grant that he gives out to different cities or areas of need if they are building a new skate park or refurbishing an existing skate park. So it could be a funding source if we're going to do three skate parks. Anything further? Would be a motion to, panel, table both of these or can we?
I would just make a recommendation that we table item number three.
Correct. And the lights are now no longer being paid for, so I think that item two, since we took them together, Madam Clerk, can we vote on them separately?
Item two leave to withdraw.
So a motion for item two leave to withdraw made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kadeem, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The guys have it? Item three?
Motion to table.
Motion to table made by Counselor Kilby?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pereira, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have it? Motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Reposo, all those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Finance is adjourned. Fall River City Council will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Mara?
Here.
Dionne? Kilby?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Reposo?
Yep.
And President LaLieve LeBeau?
Here. Will everyone in the chamber please rise for a moment of silent prayer?
I pledge allegiance.
Please remain standing for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
You have before you the mayor's veto of the city council's vote, which was taken on February 22nd regarding the. on February 22nd regarding the communication from Diamond Regional Vocational Technical High School relating to the construction of the new Diamond High School, which was laid on the table in accordance with Section 3-7 of the city charter.
Motion to lift from the table.
Second.
Motion to lift from the table made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have it?
Motion to override the mayor's veto.
Motion to override made by Council Kadeem?
Second.
Seconded by Council Pereira. Madam Clerk, roll call. Ms. Kilby?
Yeah, just a very quick comment. I'm not going to be supporting the motion. I think I don't want to overstate this, but I think I may be clear in my message and my belief that the, I think the question of this magnitude, the amount of money this is going to cost, which, again, I just, I've been speaking with Carl Hatzler on and off over the last couple of weeks. I'm in favor of the school. I want to help with any campaign that happens. But I just philosophically do not think that nine people should be deciding a project of this magnitude that will affect 90,000 people. I think we have an obligation to allow the citizens of Fall River, who are going to be footing this bill, to have a say. So with all due respect to everyone involved, I wish everyone well, and I wish the, all the students of Diamond well. So I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat five, Councilor Lee?
And while I'm not against the mayor presenting to the public a request to have that exclusion or vote to have that exclusion, I don't think it has to be at the expense of us voting no. I, that was the opinion of Corporation Council, but I still believe we can vote yes. And if the mayor wants to do, you know, make that request to the public, that's in his purview. But I think we, as a body, if we support it, we say yes. And that's it. I yield. Thank you.
Councilor in seat six, Council Pelletier.
The way I look at it, they're going to pay one way or the other. Either you're going to pay 111 million, or you could pay up to 160 million because you're going to fix it up anyway. So that's the problem I got. If the voters vote not to build it, and they're going to have to do something up there, you got 1,500 students, what do you do with them if the state closes down? What do you do then? I mean, we only got the BNC Durfee, and that's the way I see it, you know? We're still going to get stuck with the bill. And I think we're better off if we know what the amount is and try to work it out within the city, if we can. The debt exclusion is there. I wouldn't want to use it, but we've just got to make sure that it doesn't close down. And that's it. I yield. Thank you.
Anything further from the council?
Roll call.
Madam Clerk?
On the motion to override, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Kamara?
Yes.
Dionne? Kilby?
Yo.
Lee?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
And President La Liby LeBeau?
Yes.
Motion carries.
First of all?
Just one?
Seven.
Seven.
Brad. And on Diamond, the Diamond Communication, we also need to look on that again.
So before you again is the Diamond Communication. The appropriate vote would be to approve that communication.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Council Kadeem?
Second.
Seconded by Council Kamara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item number two is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the approval, of the appointment of Paulo Amaral to the conservation.
Motion to lift from the table?
Second.
Motion to lift from the table made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items lifted.
Motion to approve the appointment?
Second.
Motion approved made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 2B is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Laura Jean Washington to the Sewer Commission.
Motion to lift from the table?
Second.
Motion to lift from the table made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items lifted.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion approved made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 2C is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the approval of Rebecca Collins to the Watapa Water Board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion approved made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Pelletier. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Congratulations. Thank you.
Item three is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the reappointment of Sharon Quinn to the Library Board of Trustees.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion approved made by Council Kamara, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item four is the mayor's request for the approval, confirmation of the appointment of Bridget Allman as the Director of Financial Services.
Motion to approve?
Motion approved made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Kilby. Any discussion? Councilor in seat six, Councilor.
Is she here this evening?
She is.
Where is she? Oh, okay. She got my vote. I yield.
You met her in the elevator.
So I didn't know what she was doing there.
Anything further from the council?
No. Roll call.
Roll call, Madam Clerk. On confirmation of the appointment, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Kamara?
Yes.
Dionne? Kilby?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
And President La Liby LeBeau?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Correct.
Madam Clerk?
Item number five is a communication from the mayor in an order accepting the provisions of mass general law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22nd H, providing real estate tax exemption for Gold Star parents.
Motion to refer to audits? Motion to adopt.
Think appropriate. Motion to be to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Kamara. Any discussion? Councilor in seat seven, Council Pereira?
I just think that this is a wonderful thing that's being done. This is for Gold Star parents. If you lost a child in the war or an individual in the war, or if that person died due to war-related illness, that you'll get an exemption of $1,500 on your taxes for your property if you live in that house. I mean, I think that's a small thing to give to parents or a guardian of someone who lost their life. I was very happy to see this one and the next one on, which talks about property that's held in trust. I thought that that was, kudos to the mayor and many of our veterans that I've talked to that have seen this, just delighted to see something like this pass. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have it?
Item six is the mayor's communication in an order accepting the provisions of mass general law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22nd G, providing real estate tax exemption for property held in trust.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Council Reposo, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The guys have it?
Item seven is the mayor's communication, proposed FY 23 budgets for water and sewer divisions.
Motion to refer to finance.
Second.
Motion to refer to finance made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have it?
Item eight is the mayor's communication and proposed ordinances for FY 23 water and sewer rates.
Motion to refer to ordinance?
Second.
Motion to refer to ordinance made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it?
Item nine is the mayor's communication and the Community Development Agency's Year Three Annual Action Plan.
Motion to refer to finance? Second.
Motion to refer to finance made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Kadeem. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The guys have it?
Item 10 is the mayor's communication and proposed ordinance regarding the reorganization of city departments.
Motion to refer to ordinance?
Second.
Motion to refer to ordinance made by Council Kamara, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Council Pelletier? What's that?
I oppose.
You oppose.
The next two. 10, 11, 12.
Oppose is item 10.
We're on 10. You do 10, 11, 12?
10, 11, 12. Hold on, hold on. 10? Okay, sorry. I jumped the gun.
Do you want to oppose item 10, Councilor?
No.
No? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Item 11 is the mayor's communication and proposed ordinance establishing the position of the Director of City Operations.
Motion to refer to ordinance?
Motion to refer to ordinance made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Reposo. Any discussion? Councilor in seat six?
Yeah, I just want to, I mean, it's a, it's a big move. I want to make sure that I get the right information and do the right thing. So it's going to go to ordinance, I'll watch it from there, and I just assume oppose it right now, and I see how it comes out, and then I'll throw my vote out there, one way or the other. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat eight, Council Reposo?
Can we invite City Administrator Aiken down just to clarify exactly the rationale behind this for the public?
Motion to waive the rules?
Motion so made.
Motion to waive the rules made by Council Reposo? Is there a second?
On the motion. Hold on, there's no second here.
Is there a second? Motion to waive the rules?
Second.
Seconded by Council Pelletier. Discussion, Council Kamara?
On the motion, this is being referred to the ordinance committee?
It is. Correct.
So we will have this discussion, whatever questions you have in the ordinance committee. I don't want to get into that discussion now because I don't think anyone's prepared and looked at it yet. So there's going to be a lot of questions to be had at that meeting. And I know you probably have the money you want to ask yourself, but this is not the time for it, just so you'll know. It's going to get referred to the ordinance committee. We're all invited to attend, and we can ask those questions then. And then he'll be better prepared to present it with other people as well to answer the questions you might have today. Just want to let you know. With that, I yield.
Thank you. The motion to waive the rules, made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed. I'm opposed.
Madam Clerk, roll call?
I oppose.
Not appropriate.
I'll withdraw my motion. Save you the headache.
Motion has been withdrawn.
Thank you, Council Kamara.
Listen, there's a process for everything, and I think it's better for the administration to come down with everyone that's involved.
Fair enough.
And it helps us to get the full information.
I appreciate it.
Council Pelletier will take the floor for an hour if you're going to bring him down. With that, I yield. Thank you.
We have a motion to refer to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council Pelletier, are you opposing this one?
You're opposing this one?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, you caught me sleeping. I'm sorry.
Council Pelletier is opposed.
Item 12 is the mayor's communication and proposed ordinance to correct an omission to the position of Director of Community Services.
Motion to refer to ordinance?
Motion to refer to ordinance made by Council Pereira?
Second.
Seconded by Council Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Any opposed? Council Pelletier is opposed.
Item 13 is communications from the Traffic Commission recommending amendments to traffic ordinance.
Motion to refer to ordinance?
Motion to refer to ordinance made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Pelletier. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have it?
Have a miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
The motion passed through second reading and enrollment made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Pelletier. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The guys have it?
We have a proposed ordinance relating to fines for violation of emergency parking prohibitions for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion so made.
Motion made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Where is the Committee on Human Services, Housing, Youth and Elder Affairs convened to discuss at-risk youth? And where is the youth of the city feel isolated and in need of help and resources with nowhere to turn to for guidance and/or support? And where is the city needs to become more involved and get partnerships and events together to help these children get out of their comfort zones? And where is we need to be more up to speed and take advantage of using the digital platforms children are using to share events, updates, and resources to allow them to have all the information at their fingertips? Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council Committee on Human Services, Housing, Youth and Elder Affairs use their platform to announce Youth Violence Prevention Week to be held April 25th through 29th, 2022.
Would be a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt the resolution? Second.
To adopt the resolution made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 17 is the order granting permission to Comcast Cable Corporation for new pole location on Hancock Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Council Reposo, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? Councilor, seat six.
I stated my opposition, that I think the cable contract, they should do something with it. Till then, I got a no vote for them, till they get the contract. With that, I yield.
Anything further from the council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Council Pelletier?
The police chief's report on licenses?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the application of Jennifer Lassard for auto repair shop at 1904 Bay Street?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion approved made by, motion to adopt made by Council Reposo, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council?
Motion to refer to Corporation Council made by Council Reposo, seconded by Council Pelletier. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the, excuse me, the response of the Assistant Corporation Council to an open meeting law complaint?
Motion accept.
Place on file.
Motion accept and place on file made by Council Kamara, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 22 is also a response.
Motion accept and place on file.
Assistant Corporation Council.
Motion accept and place on file made by Council Kamara, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 23, our drain layer licenses?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the drain layer licenses made by Council Pereira. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 24 is the city engineer's request for street openings less than five years on a number of streets and intersections.
We have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Motion approved made by Council Pereira?
Second.
Seconded by Council Kamara. Discussion? Councilor, seat seven. Council Pereira?
I just want to add that in a conversation with the engineer, Dan Agia, I said, gee, opening all these streets less than five years. But he has really gotten with the gas company who's doing these openings on how they're going to repair these streets and completely repair the streets. So I think that that's kudos to him, because we've constantly been talking about that. And he does have a list of all the streets that are going to be going forward, which ones are done if we get money, which after 90, what other ones are going to be done. So he's really working hard. Sometimes I think we, we don't compliment the people that are working really hard in this building. So a shout out to Dan Agia. That's it. Thank you, Councilor.
I agree. I have confidence he's going to get these done correctly. Anything further from the council? Motion to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to take 25 through 30 together? Second.
So moved.
Motion to take 25 through 30 together made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Kadeem. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk?
25 through 30 are city council minutes. We have public hearing of March 8th. Committee on Finance of February 22nd and March 8th. Joint meeting of the City Council and School Committee of March 8th. Regular meeting of March 8th, and special meeting of the City Council of March 3rd.
Motion to approve?
Motion approved made by Council Kamara, seconded by Council Kadeem. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Take a recess to sign ordinances. Please.